Now, heal Tom. Go ahead and talk to about your pedicab service, please. Share right quick.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Vince Wiley. I'm co-owner of Joy Ride Pedicabs and this is my business partner, Mike Shaller. And we operate at the Braves Stadium as the pedicab service there. And Dr. Chisulu, I think we met maybe, how many years ago?
At least three.
At least three years ago. And I think we've come to the city council before. But we are, just want to help him with, with his vision to bring the city and the citizens together and, and be a model for the Atlanta area. And I think the pedicab service is a catalyst, or if you will, to kind of bridge things together. Because we're all in this together. You know, whether you're black, white, rich or poor, we're all in together. And I think the pedicab service can, can help the United Action Network build on, on what he's trying to do.
Thank you, Vince. Vince and Mike, they believe in me. They've been doing this pedicab service for over ten years, all over the country. And, and they're going to come here and help us provide an exceptional service to not only visitors, but for our citizens. So, we have a team now. This is my main brother. And he comes all the way from Beaufort. And I tell you, Henry and I, we've been working together. And, 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 and it's just so, we built a very good team to bring a great service to College Park. We will be that model city for the nation. People will come all over the world to College Park. We got a way to do that now. That's, and, and all we're asking you is for a hundred thousand dollars for Phase Two. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Okay, are we combining two, two agenda items together? Is that workshop? Is this, okay, anyway.
Yeah, that, that's Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay. So, basically, the, the, the United Action and the pedicab, so you, there's a, what you're saying is that you believe that, explain, you believe that this pedicab is going to be part of your strategy?
Strategy, the, oh, the overall goal is to, to realize the dream of Dr. King. I'm passionate about the love in, in his life he gave for us. But we have not answered the call because we didn't know how. So I committed my life, I changed my life, to learn what I've learned. And now, I'm in a position, we're in a position to share with all over College Park and to share it with the world. To create what he talked about, a beloved community. Number one, how to live out the American creed. We haven't even talked about, how do all of us live out the American creed? How do each one of us pledge that we're going to live out the creed? We need it now more than anything. And then, the second, how do we stop judging each other by our color, our skin? We know how to do that. We know how to teach that. We know how to show that. We know how to get that all over the world for unity. That's all we're talking about, unity, the collect, connection. We are all connected from different places to bring about a greater future. And believe it, College Park can be the model city. You believe, you gave me thirty thousand dollars. Give me a hundred thousand dollars and you watch what you get.
Okay, Dr. Chisulu, I, 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 what I wanted to, what I was trying to get to is the connection between the pedicabs and your, so, so is, what is it? When people are riding the pedicabs, you're going to have people talk to them about?
That's right. The ambassadors, they're going to be selling College Park and what College Park is and what it offers. It's identity. Why it's different? Why they come here?
You're going to run out of time.
Why they visit here? Why they spend the money?
I didn't want you to run out of time.
Why they buy houses?
I know you're passionate. So the question I have, this program, you're asking, so basically now you're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. Are you expecting the city to continue to fund this program? Is there going to be any charge that will be given to individuals who ride these pedicabs? What, what is the, the sustainability going forward for this program?
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim.
And that's all I have?
Pro-Tim. All the details are not clear just yet. And I don't want to say something that's not correct right at this moment. The pedicabs, that's our first phase, I mean, part of the first phase, getting that on the street. And, and I've relied on Vince on how we're going to do that. And Vince already operates and knows how to make it financially sustainable. So if he could share with you a few moments about how he's doing it at Truitt Park.
Yes, Mayor Pro-Tim. Mike and I, a- as I said before, we operate the pedicab service at the Braves Stadium. And, uh, once again, as I said before, we are like a shuttle service. If you've ever been at the Braves Stadium or the Battery, there's a lot of parking on the Battery, but there isn't enough. So, so a lot of people park at some of the, like, the Weather Channel or some of the other participating, uh, office buildings. And that's where we go pick them up. And we bring them from the hotels and, and the other parking lots. And we bring them to the Battery and to the, uh, to the Braves Stadium. And I, I think what Dr. Chisulu is trying to say is, we would implement that, like, like he said, the ambassadorship program. But it's a little, it's a little, you know, we might do things a little different here. We, we, what we do is we, the people, they provide a tip. It's a suggestive tip. So when they get on the pedicab, you know, you know, they ask what the price is or whatever. And it's a suggestive tip. I don't know if that, is that, is that what you're asking? Is that part of what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Chisulu, we've got, uh, the time has expired. And I, I want to make sure if anyone has any pressing questions, they get the opportunity to ask them quickly. Councilmember Carr?
Just a quick comment, you know, off of one, I want to realize the dream as well, Dr. Chisulu. But I also want to be assured that this provides a, a good service for all of our residents. So, so at some point, let's be sure to spell out in detail the direct community services and benefits that your group will be providing for our residents directly. So I'll just leave it at that. And at some point real soon here, I would like to see and experience this pedicab setup that you have out at Truitt. So, uh, let's set that up so I can see it. And if any of my colleagues want to go out and see it and experience it as well, I think it'd be good to see, get a taste of what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Councilmember Arnold?
My question, I'll just email my question since we are out of time. I want to respect what, um, what we put in place earlier. So I'll email my questions.
Okay. Councilmember Gay?
I'm saying here, I'll email my questions.
Thank you very much.
To the gentlemen who are from the ATL Pedicabs, are you investing in?
Joy Ride Pedicabs?
I'm sorry, I apologize for, for, for getting the name wrong.
That's okay.
Are you investing in, in Dr. Chisulu's pedicabs?
Are we investing?
Yes, sir.
No. I mean, as, as in monetarily?
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There's another, he's, he's, there's another, next workshop.
Agenda item five, Pedicab Ordinance Revision to Expand the Scope of Streets to Include the Pedestrian Bridge Presented by Dr. Chisulu, sponsored on behalf of Mayor Pro-Tim Jamelle McKenzie.
Thank you once again. I, it's, I'm so excited. We want to be able to provide this service to the citizen, just like Councilman Carr. And that's going to be our premier service. And, and it's transporting seniors, individuals with handicaps. We have purchased a limousine pedicab. And, and that's, and it can six people over the, and so if someone has an oxygen bottle, we can transport them. Many people in our community, in particular in Ward One, they're seniors and can't walk down the pedestrian trail or the, go over the bridge. And so, I thought it would be, uh, significant if we first laid out the program for our community. And, and to make it a primary goal to get seniors and others in our community to take advantage of that beautiful bridge. And to see, I, I, some of our seniors have never seen that, the, uh, the arena and all those beautiful apartments that have beautiful settings over there. And now we can get people over there. And, and so, uh, we would like the approval to provide this service to our citizens. We don't know how, it may be just a suggestive tip. But we are committed and I have a, a team that will not only train people in our community, but will be in our community to provide the service to our seniors. So we're ready to go. The pedicab is here in College Park. And, uh, and Vince and Mike, they are ready to provide the service as well as train our pedicab operators. And then, uh, Henry and I, we're going to train the ambassadors. So we have a twofold ambassadors and then we have pedicab operators. And we're going to bring that together. We're going to have ambassadors, pedicab operators, and, and we have the team here to, to bring that to a reality here. And I, again, I just don't know how thankful I am to all of you. This, this is amazing. And I'm so delighted and so happy and excited because we have a great future ahead of us and I'm glad to be a part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tim?
Okay, question, uh, Dr. Chisulu. So basically, this, this agenda, this workshop item is for us to see the streets. So what are you, what you're trying to do now is expand the streets that were, and the, where the, the pedicab will go? Is that Winston?
Well, what happened?
Talking about the resolution, right?
Yeah, yeah, what, when we first brought this to the Mayor and Council, you, you all approved the streets on Main, East Main and some other streets. The bridge wasn't in place. We, I didn't know anything about the bridge. And I didn't even know anything about the pedestrian trail. So this is going on for three, four years now. But anyway, now the pedestrian trail is available, the bridge is available, it's about to open up. And I, I'm a senior. I, I, I would love to go all the way down the pedestrian trail and cross the bridge on the pedicab. Now, we're in a position, any senior in our community that want to take advantage of what College Park and their tax dollars paid for, we now can provide it to. Some of them, you know, some people can't, they, they, they don't get out of their house. We now can offer them an opportunity to get out of the house and, and, and tour our city. I'm elated to be offered that. But you all made it possible, so I thank you. I couldn't have done it without you.
Okay, so this resolution is to expand the, the, the streets. And in terms of the pedicabs themselves, uh, uh, Council, will we, in terms of liability insurance, that's something that, that would be on the city or is that, or is that for these pedicabs?
Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, I, I have, the, the program is sufficiently fleshed out for me to, to answer that. So, uh, I don't know, but obviously, uh, once we get more details, I'll be seeing to the city's liability and exposure.
Okay, so this is just all we're doing tonight when we get into regular session is making a determination whether or not to accept the resolution? Or the, okay, the ordinance, okay, got it. All right. The ordinance, the ordinance. All right, no questions?
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim.
Thank you, Dr. Chisulu.
Thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Carr, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
No questions.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
Agenda item six, Price Barber Shop Historic Preservation Presented by Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., requested on behalf of Mayor Pro-Tim Jamelle McKenzie.
Hello, Council, thank you for having me today. I am Stephanie Meduski. I am with Stan Tech Consulting Services. We have been fortunate to be working with the city since 2019 with the EPA Brownfields Program. We have helped the city to secure over a million dollars in Brownfields funding to help revitalize some of the contaminated properties in the city. These include Six West, Headwaters Nature Preserve, Main Street and Mercer, as well as now we are doing the first Phase One for Camp Truitt. But I am here to talk to you today specifically about the revitalization and historic preservation of the Price Barber Shop property. This property is on the corner of Harvard and Conley. And it consists of two buildings which together create about three thousand square feet of opportunity to renovate and make it into a community asset. And we have gone out to the community already with the funding from the Brownfields Program to talk to the community and understand how they prioritize the Price Barber Shop and the adjacent duplex. They were first presented with several options for the revitalization. This included, um, self-guided historic museum, FOA offices and potential incubator spaces. And we were able to gather from them that they preferred to have a self-guided museum as well as an open community space and FOA offices. So from there, we created two different concepts and took it back to the community for them to evaluate and let us know what their preference was. And we were able to make, um, concept plans for how we can revitalize that property. Under the Brownfields Program, we were able to conduct a structural assessment and a condition assessment for the property as well as a Phase One environmental site assessment. In doing so, we realized that the property is in, um, great need of repair to bring it up to code and to make it safe and watertight before it can be remodeled to be used for the community. It also has asbestos and lead-based paint. So fortunately, those two items can be remediated under the Brownfields Program. But the remodel would have to be done outside of the program. So our understanding in working with the city staff is that they need some assistance with the next steps, which include, first, a recommendation from us is to hire an architect because it's going to be really important to get the architectural and engineering design scoped out to really get a true feel for how much the project is going to cost. We do have an estimate of probable cost based on the structural assessment. Again, that's to bring it up to code and to make it safe. And then, next, we would recommend procuring a, a general contractor to start taking care of some of those items. And, um, of course, securing the funding. So, we've estimated a probable cost of about 1.16 million to do all of these structural upgrades that would be required that were shown to be problematic in the structural assessment. And we added a 25% contingency. And we did that because of the state of the economy and not being sure with the tariffs and the supply chain, how prices might go up in the next few years. So, we just want to be able to present a realistic picture of what this project is going to cost. Okay, and then you can see here, are you all able to see the, the slides? Okay. So what you see here is an interior and exterior view of the concept designs that our architectural engineers put together. In the front of the duplex, the duplex being the larger building, there is a community gathering space. And the Price Barber Shop would be remodeled to be a self-guided historic museum. And the museum would consist of pictures and items from the community that represent College Park from that time in that era and from the various communities in the city. Additionally, the duplex could also house office space for the FOA group. And so that has been designed in as well. And I think you can see that on the, the next slide. Yes, great, thank you. So, in order to do those three next steps, um, our understanding is that the city staff could use some assistance with procuring an architectural engineer. So we've factored in three different tasks into our proposal. And that, the first task would be to create bid packages, to help review the bid packages and to select the contractor. It also includes project oversight as the construction begins and the remediation, and producing grant applications to help fill any funding gaps in the funding stack. So this proposal is, it's unique. Normally, all of the work that we do falls under the Brownfields Program. So it's almost 100% always paid for by the EPA. But in this particular case, this work is not eligible under the Brownfields Program. So this would be coming out of the city budget or, or some other source of funding. So, we have scoped this as a time and materials task up to forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We always strive to come in under budget and we take a lot of pride in our ability to do that. But again, we want to be realistic and that's what we think is necessary to help, um, move this project fully through the process. Okay, and that's all I have. Can I answer any questions?
Mayor Pro-Tim?
Uh, yes, thank you so much for coming out. This is, we've been working on this for a minute. I, I, I do know that the community, in terms of the drawings that we were showing in, in the, in this, that there, it may look a little different because I think we want to keep the building looking more like the original building. So that's probably the only change that I can see from this. But the forty-two thousand is coming from my community enhancement. I've already budgeted two hundred thousand dollars this year from TPD funds to go towards that, that, that part. These, from, from my, yeah, from whatever, I don't know, TPD, hotel motel, holiday in taxes, okay? But the, the, the other monies that we're talking about would not be coming from the city's general fund, but those would be coming from our TPD tourist product development dollars, which allow us to use those type of dollars for a museum, um, community, uh, building of this sort. So, I just want to thank you and anything else, I will continue to email you about.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
Thanks for the presentation. Great presentation, by the way. Uh, this is a very exciting, uh, very long overdue and historic project. Uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, I have no questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
No questions. Thank you for the information. Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
I just have a couple of comments and it may turn into a question. The renderings that you presented, this came out of our EPA funds?
Yes, that's correct.
And how much is still available in the EPA side?
Um, well, we're working on several different projects. So it depends on the direction that we go for the Headwaters Nature Preserve, Camp Truitt. So I, it's difficult to answer that question. We've almost used the entire three hundred thousand dollar initial grant that, uh, it's called a, a community-wide assessment grant. And that's primarily for environmental site assessments. But we still have a significant amount of funds in the multipurpose grant, which helps do the environmental assessments, the concept planning, as well as the cleanup and remediation of contamination on a site that the city chooses.
Second question is, since, since this is not part of the EPA assessment grant, what qualifies you all to oversee this project? Why aren't we just going out to the marketplace and getting a project manager? I'm trying to understand how, why do you get to, not why, but why are you presenting this as a role when this is not Santa's?
Yes, that's a, a fair question. Our team has been involved in these projects for over ten years now. And we've been involved from the very beginning of the Brownfields Program. So that's everything from the very first environmental assessments, the property transfers, the structural assessments. And we have a, a deep knowledge of each of the project sites. And we also, we have thirty thousand employees in our company and many of them are experts in different fields. So we have market analysts, we have engineers, we have architects, designers, and we have access to all of those people so that we can bring a, a team together to customize the work that's done for each project and bring a very high level of skill to complete it.
So tonight, we're, we're approving which, which item, for the forty-two or the one seventy-nine? What is on the agenda for tonight?
We have both.
Two, two of them?
One, one is in the consent agenda because that is money that I've already been approved from the two hundred thousand. That's the forty-two thousand. So that's in the consent agenda. I'm just asking.
That's, that's TPD.
It's, it's, it's our, it's, it's hotel motel, car rental taxes, money. Yeah, I guess if you want to call it. It's not from the TPD fund that we used for the, to, for, for, for the, for the Camp Truitt, for the Botanical Garden Project. These are funds that I allocated through my community enhancement priorities. Yes, this is coming out of my budget. Okay, the only thing that would, now, TPD would be, uh, for the funding for the improvements in the restoration of the Price Barber Shop and duplex.
And, and they're being considered as a sole source?
No, we're not paying them. They're, I mean, they're not, we're, you're not doing the work. They're just giving us the.
Oh, that's a great question. So we are under a continuing master services agreement because of the Brownfields work. So this, we just submit a task order and that would go under that MSA, the master services agreement.
So we still would have to bid this out to, for the work? I mean, you all are not, this is, all, what we're doing is we're looking for the money for the, the project, but we're not paying you that amount of money.
Correct, we would not be doing the architectural and engineering. We would help you find someone. We recommend preferably someone local would probably the, be the best way to go. So we would just be helping to bring the right people in to make sure a, a successful project.
Mr. Hooker? And then I'll go to Councilmember Arnold.
Quick question.
Let me, I think Mr. Hooker was trying to supplement.
Yes, this, the forty-two five is, is the fourth multiplier. We don't have enough staff in economic development to oversee the process properly. And now that we have a procurement officer on board, there will be less procurement-related activities and more of the evaluation and, and judging and proj- project management-type activities that we'd be relying on this staff for. So that, that's, that's what that is. I wanted to, to clarify that.
The forty-two?
The forty-two five, yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
So I, I just got really confused because our, our initiatives, our, our priorities were in general funds. So what is it about TPD?
I only have a hundred thousand dollars that came from the general, of the nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that I had put into the budget, I only had a hundred and twelve thousand coming from the general fund. Everything else I did was hotel motel, car rental taxes. So this is coming from my hotel motel, car rental taxes, not, not the general fund. I don't have anything, as I said, except a hundred and twelve thousand coming from general fund.
Okay, so I, I think I'm, I'm confused. I thought when we approved it, it was all under general funds.
You're talking about your community enhancements?
Your community enhancements, right? My community enhancements, eight hundred and eighty-something thousand came from T, from hotel motel, car rental taxes. So it's not from taxpayer property taxes. I only have a hundred thousand, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars that came from the general fund.
Councilmember Arnold, any other questions?
No.
All right.
I had one more comment, man. When, when you all did the pure gas station, uh, just, just, just for the record, I started that initiative to turn it into a tourist welcome center for College Park. And that initiative got, in my opinion, hijacked by the previous council. And then it went into a private developer's purse. But one thing that was not done was that a private sector took advantage of a million dollars of EPA Brownfield grant to remediate those tanks. It may have been a little bit more than me. My issue is, A, does the EPA grant allow us to let a private sector use it? And I would say yes. But two, in order for that to have been allowed, we were supposed to take the deed from that developer and deed it back when the remediation was finished. So the phase two of remediation is not finished. So that same developer then went and sold his property to a new investor having a million dollars worth of remade- dollars worth of rem remediation that we paid for. I just wanted to make it make sense. If we're moving with y'all to other projects, how do we safeguard ourselves from those types of issues in the future?
I think bringing in the legal team and just making sure if you are going to do a transfer like that, I'm familiar with what you're talking about, that there is a contract in place about what's going to happen after the remediation has been completed. So I don't know if that was done specifically for the gas station project or why they were able to sell it to another private person, but that is what my recommendation would be for that.
That's all I have.
All right. I do have a couple of questions. So at our last BIDA meeting, Mr. Hooker, the BIDA board voted to accept $200,000 from the city that came from, that was allocated from Mayor Protem's community enhancement funds for the renovation of Price Barber Shop, the duplex, and the parking lot across the street. Is that different than the money that we're talking about right now?
No. This is the first 42.5 of the 200,000 that'll be spent. And then part of this will be engaging an architect, that'll be a couple of tens of thousands, doing the work on the property, that'll be tens of thousands. So all of that will add up to the $200,000 that we're looking to get encumbered in fiscal '25.
So why isn't BIDA making this decision instead of the city council? Because BIDA's already agreed to accept this money.
BIDA agreed to permit the city to do this work on its own property. That was in the resolution. BIDA was saying that the city is doing the project, the city is leading this project, this renovation project, and BIDA agreed to allow that to happen on property it owns.
But it also agreed to accept the money, did it not?
It, the money's not going to BIDA. The money's being spent by the city on these various vendors. So it wasn't an accept the money, it was acknowledging that this money was set aside for this project and then saying, we're allowing the city to do it on our own, on our property.
I think the BIDA attorney actually is here. Ms. Wiley, can you clarify? Because I'm a little confused.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Hooker had it correct. The last BIDA board meeting where we discussed this matter, BIDA is the legal owner of the property and was acknowledging receipt of the funds, I believe so they could be properly encumbered under the city's financial records. And so in that, the city owned it, I mean, BIDA owned it, BIDA also allowed the city to granted access for the city to go in and do the renovations.
Sure, granting access, but BIDA accepted the money, did they not?
We accepted the money for use on the property so that it could be properly encumbered by, on the city's financial records. And so that's what that was about. Dr. A may be able to explain more about the encumbrance factor, but I know that the fiscal year end was coming to its close, and I see Mayor Protem is nodding her head. And so we want to have something documented.
I understand, that's why. I understand exactly what BIDA did while I was in the BIDA meeting.
Yes.
But is it not BIDA's decision to determine how that $200,000 is spent? That's my question.
No.
So BIDA agreed to allow the city to come on to its property, just a formality, since we're all component units of each other. So to do this work, and the city would then, under its economic development director here, would take on the project of doing the renovations. So the money would still stay, it would just be encumbered for the BIDA project, but the city would be leading the actual work.
All right. So BIDA has no say as to how this $200,000 is going to be spent?
I believe that, and Brian, please help me, I believe that there were going to be, since the economic development director is also, sir, is the executive director for BIDA, that there was going to be conversation throughout this process to what, as to how the property would be updated. So, but having formal say-so, I don't believe that that was a part of the resolution, ma'am, Mayor.
So, wait, hold on one second. And so is this month, did this $200,000, did it come from hotel motel tax or did it come from car rental?
I can look that up. It's one or the other, but it's definitely eligible for the purpose that we are using it for. That is 100.
Dr. Adadiran, can you clarify where it came from?
I mean, I can look it up. He doesn't have it in front of himself.
I know $200,000 was part of the community enhancement priorities that was approved for Ward 1. That's part of the, almost a million dollars that was approved. And then I have to get and carry to the account, the account number, see what that is.
All right.
It's definitely not general fund. It's not property tax money. It's restricted funds that are available for exactly the purpose. And in terms of the situation with BIDA, what BIDA, BIDA has not been involved in the decision-making in terms of the Price Barber Shop. That has more so been with economic development and the FOA group. And so I believe that that, BIDA has not made any attempt or to say that they wanted to handle this development. If they did, they would have that ability, but that, the resolution that was passed at that last meeting was BIDA's way of saying, okay, we're going to let you spend $200,000, but we're going to let you spend it the way you want to spend it on our property.
That's correct.
For those persons that are trying to understand what's going on.
I mean, some of it's a partnership arrangement.
Right. Yeah, it's a partnership.
I'm a little unclear about the partnership, but that's okay. It's fine.
Okay.
If everyone else is clear on it, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we've got three more items to go. It is 7:45. How do you wish to proceed? Want to keep on trucking?
I have a couple of items on workshop that I think should only take about five minutes.
Okay.
So I think we can knock those two out.
All right. We've got the most presentation by Mr. Lewis. There he is. Hi, Mr. Lewis.
Presentation on the municipal option sales tax most for funding improvements to our city infrastructure by using our on-demand contractors presented by Timothy Lewis, Water and Sewer Superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council. I'm the water superintendent.
I'm sewer superintendent.
And we are happy to be here today. So with the most... So with the most money, you can see the agenda. Hold on, let me get my paperwork right. You know, good evening, mayor and council. Member, I want to thank you guys so much for having us here today. The most right now, you have about $6,221,651.84. This was approved back in 2022, and thank you citizens so much for blessing us with this.
If they could silence it, appreciate it.
And as you can see, the... As you can see on the screen, you know, the water line that we replaced, the sales tax. It moved so fast.
Sir, do you know how to stop that?
Can you stop that?
I'm just asking, do you happen to know?
No, ma'am.
I'm not familiar.
It's leaving me.
Not familiar. It keeps fading in and out. I didn't realize that we had that type of presentation, so apologies.
But like I was saying, you know, the most sales tax, you know, it's been helping us a lot. We've changed out in Ward 3, some water lines, and Ward 1, water lines, Ward 4, some sewer lines. Ward 3, we've changed out on Harden Circle, which at one time was Gavinized Pipe, Harden Avenue, which was Bestis Pipe. We have changed that out to Duct the Pipe. So the most money, you know, is helping us and it's leading us in the right direction with our infrastructure. The most was spent on West Fayetteville, replaced entire sewer line, was 1.1 million.
Page 157.
I'm trying to see where I'm at.
Mr. Lewis?
Mm-hmm.
You know this stuff like the back of your hand. You just want to tell us what you want to tell us?
Okay. So, I'm coming here tonight, you know, to just give you guys an update on what we've been spending the most on and get, and let the citizen know that what we've been spending on. We've been pretty much spending on infrastructure. Probably going to need a little bit more for the rehab, our lift station. What me and Tony are trying to do, we're just trying to get our infrastructure up to par because we way behind. And thank you if y'all have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem?
I'm going to let them clap first. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for all you do. I just brag all the time about our entire Public Works team. You all are amazing. And, yeah, we do have a lot of work yet to do, and it seems the decisions that are being made are wise and just, my thing is, I just wait for recommendations from you all in terms of the areas that we should be focusing on in this upcoming year, and especially with this $6 million. What are the priorities? What do we, because there's a lot of things throughout this city. So I'm just looking for you all to let us know in the upcoming days what the focus for the priorities should be. So, but thank you so much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Carron?
All right. Great job, guys. City manager, keep us updated with the projects. I do want to discuss a potential water sewer project with you in Ward 2 as well. But, yeah, let's keep going. We've got these funds and we've got to spend them where they need it the most. So thanks again.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you for the presentation and the information on what has been spent and what we have. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make a couple of comments. For those who don't know, the most tax had to be passed by our legislators. I think it took about almost four or five years before it got approved. It kept getting not approved, not approved. So credit needs to go to the previous mayor and council.
Yes.
For their continuous fight for this money. That's number one. Second thing I want to say is, how much comes into our fund '25 and '26? And talk a little bit about the lift station.
Well, '25, '26, how much fund will we have?
Do we get every year?
I don't, I can't, yeah, I won't be able to tell you that, council.
I mean, don't this money come every year?
It comes every month.
Every month, yeah.
It's an extra penny.
Yeah, it'd be a financial...
It's an extra penny in the city.
On the lift station, the federal government, we expecting 2.1, I believe 2.1. The total project for the lift station right now as we speak and working with EPA is about $3.2 million. And out of the $3.2 million, the federal government will give us about 2.4, and we have to match it by almost 7...
700.
700 and something thousand from this most fund.
So that money from the federal government, is that, is he referring to the most or some new money?
Well, this is the world, with the most, yeah.
From Congress and Scott, correct?
Yeah.
Has that been pulled down yet?
No, we haven't, no. We're still working with EPA, you know, to, things kind of slowed down when we had a new president in place, but the past two weeks or so, you know, stuff got rolling back. So we're working on, we fill out the necessary papers, done all the literature and everything that's, that has been requested of us. So we're still in the process, but about 700,000 will be coming from the most fund, and the federal government will give us about 2.4 million dollars.
So, to answer your question, councilman, we'll still need a 2, I mean, we'll still need 2.5 million to complete the lift station.
So you're going to take it out of the fund that you just spoke of, right?
The most, yes. Yes, yes.
All right. And one last final question. In addition to David Scott, didn't we get money from Congresswoman Kim Way? Then we go to some event where she gave us 600,000?
800.
It was 800.
Is that the money you're talking about?
That's for the stormwater. Stormwater is different from...
That stormwater?
Yeah.
Has that been pulled down?
No, no, ma'am.
Are we going to get that?
Yeah, well, from what EPA said, yes, we will get that.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Lewis, you said that we would need how much to complete the lift station outside of the 2.4 that Congresswoman Scott was able to secure for us?
Well, we'll need an additional 2.5.
So a total of 4.9 million?
Yes. Well, 2.5 and...
Because that 3.2 million sounded low to me, I thought, on the lift station from what I had recalled.
You're looking at probably about 5 million. So 2.5 and then we give them the 2.5, they're giving you your 5s.
That 6.2 million dollar number that you indicated, as of what date did that, was that to the most fund? How, what, as of what date was that balance?
Maybe last month. So it should be something different now.
How much have we spent overall on most projects?
Give me, give me...
That's not really a question for you. It's really for Dr. Adadiran or Mr. Jackson.
I don't have, it's something I can get for you, but I don't have that, you know. No, I do not have that.
So I had the opportunity to see your team working on a water main break, and one of the things that we discussed was the fact that a lot of our valves are very old.
Yes.
Throughout the system. And that complicates your ability to address water main breaks. And I saw your team going from valve to valve to try to shut things off while water is gushing, and I'm standing there thinking, wow, that's money lost. That's more money we're going to pay East Point for that water. So one of the things that I would love for us to see is a comprehensive overview of our water sewer system and really ranking the needs of the system so we can start taking off those projects one by one. I think we may need some outside help to make that assessment because what your teams do on a daily basis, and we see them, we see them out in these streets doing the work, is that we're hitting the emergencies that come up. West Fayetteville was an emergency when we found that sewer class. We had to deal with that. We had to deal with some of the projects that are coming up on our agenda for the regular session, that these are things that have to be done and they are being funded with most funds. But a lot of times, people don't recognize that these are their tax dollars at work. So if we can come up with a way to get an assessment and actually plan out some of these projects so people can see them coming to fruition, I think it will not only help for your goals of infrastructure improvement overall, but just general awareness about how this money is being used and the good work that we're doing in the community. So can we get that on the agenda? Can we get a procurement, an RFP out so we can... an RFP out so we can get an assessment of the system overall? I think we can pay for that with most funds. Can we not?
Uh, I have to check, ma'am. I have to. I have to check.
Okay.
Because there are some things the most can, you know, um, we can use it and some things we cannot.
Right. I understand. Water and sewer. But if we, if we do an assessment of the entire system so we can actually tackle these projects, I think it's gonna, it, it's going to, to pay off for the entire community as opposed to just hitting those emergencies when they come. Appreciate the work that y'all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Agenda item eight, update payments for the Keep College Park Beautiful appointees from the finance director, Terry Jackson, requested on behalf of Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Councilmember Arnold?
Hello.
Or, hi, Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, yes, I wanted to provide an update on, uh, Keep College Park Beautiful appointees. We have not made any payments to the appointees. Um, I think there was some confusion regarding which department was supposed to initiate these payments.
So I would imagine that it would have come out of the Keep College Park Beautiful budget, right?
That's in, in, College Park, Keep College Park Beautiful does not have a budget on its own. They are part of sanitation.
Okay.
So that ha, will have to come from sanitation. And I discussed this with, uh, Francis Kennedy-
Right.
You know, together with Cedric. And whatever the stipend is need to come from sanitation. Keep College, you know, they don't have a budget of their own.
So wh, when can we get the payments out? I mean, we promised our, we, we voted on this in June, right? We, and then after finding out that they weren't getting, uh, their, their payments, um, since July of last year, the beginning of the fiscal year, uh, I brought it up in January and we still haven't paid. So is it, I mean, can we expedite payments to these, um, citizens who have been dedicating their time and energy to helping the city?
That, that should be no prob, I discussed that with Francis, I believe, a week, a week or so ago. That should be no problem, ma'am.
Okay.
No, and then I think that's-
Yeah.
Well, I, I just had a couple of individuals that are on the committee that have been asking. And so if we can get that taken care of within the next couple of weeks.
Yes, definitely. We can start processing those payments this week, definitely.
Okay.
And this is for the twenty-twenty, for the year twenty-twenty-four. Because we don't give the stipends until the end of the year. So they would get their stipend. So basically, we must be talking about persons who did not get their stipend for twenty-twenty-four because they won't get their twenty-twenty-five stipend until December. That's how we pay the stipends for the different board members.
Based upon the minutes from the January meeting, I believe it was approved for stipends from June of twenty-twenty-four through January of twenty-twenty-five?
July, uh, of twenty-twenty-four through December of twenty-twenty-four. We haven't given them anything.
Okay, yeah.
So they're looking at at least six months of, six months, six months of stipend for twenty-twenty-four. I just wanted to clarify, we don't do it, they get a stipend per meeting or per month or whatever it is, but they receive it at the end of the year. So there are people who should have gotten something in December and that's why it came up in January because they didn't get anything and we're still waiting for them to get what they should have had in twenty-twenty-four.
You're correct.
Councilor Will, you know, I talked to, um, Ms. Kennedy about it this past week and, uh, we will, we will work it out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Agenda item nine, update ethics board presented by city attorney, requested on behalf of Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, I passed out at the beginning of the meeting at the work session, the, the process that we're undertaking to, uh, fill the members of the, um, of the ethics, um, board. Uh, a, as you well know, you passed an ordinance that changed our prior system. When we had a, a single hearing officer, we went, uh, to an ethics board, uh, which is a more traditional, uh, format. One of the differences in the process that we, uh, in trying in our ordinance was, uh, residency requirements where we wanted, uh, the five directors to be residents of different municipalities and four counties. We also, out of the five, um, the ordinance requires that three of them be licensed attorneys and also that, uh, if they're not a licensed attorney for the other two, that they have a background that lends itself to be in an ethics board, interpret their professional attainments, education, uh, and experience. Also, obviously, if someone's going to show up on an ethics board, uh, then they may, they must be ethically, uh, beyond reproach. So we have to vet their background. We, we're going to have to, uh, recruit candidates because obviously, I don't know if we're going to be able just to put out an announcement and, and get a whole lot of feedbacks. We're gonna have, I'm actively, um, looking for individuals who meet these, uh, requirements. Uh, my goal and objective is to work with the city manager and to present, um, nominees for your review and consideration. My goal is by the, uh, the first meeting, um, in May. Uh, and, um, so I guess I'll be recorded, so if I don't leave that time for the, I'm sure Councilwoman Arnold will hold my feet to the fire.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
All right. So it is eight oh five right now. Um, we're gonna take a ten-minute break and we will start the meeting, the regular meeting at eight fifteen.